Good evening and welcome to the April 14th, 2022 Board of Commissioners' monthly working session. Our first item of business this evening is to approve the minutes from the working session of February 10, 2022, and I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. We will now open the floor for public comment on the two agenda items that are, we will consider this evening. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak to the agenda? And if not, we will move to Zoom.
Ms. Lehman, you're unmuted.
So first of all, I'd just like to say that comp plan meeting has to be canceled. You did not follow the law. You did not-
Ms. Lehman, Ms. Lehman, this comment period is about the agenda items before us in the working session.
I understand that, but you didn't post the documents, so please-
Ms. Lehman, if you understand it, you need to follow it and direct your comments to the two items on the agenda.
I just spent some time putting tapes together of you not following any of the laws, and I'm talking to you about laws that you're not following, and so you're telling me I better follow the law or else?
I'm telling you that this is a comment period for the two agenda items that are on the agenda. If you have comments about those, I would ask you to get to those now.
I do, but you do realize the irony, I hope.
Please get to your comments.
No, I, my comments are about the ordinance for the responsible contractor. And the responsible contractor ordinance has been problematic. It seems to follow Mike Clark around everywhere. It has been problematic in every township. In fact, I even had the minutes to a meeting where Mr. Manfredi was asked, when he was in Conshohocken, whether the problem with the bids they were having had to do with the responsible contracting ordinance and contractor ordinance. And he said, could be. Okay, so, and that is what, if you've done any research whatsoever, that's what you'll find all the other townships have had a problem with. It has a clause in there about apprenticeships. That's the most onerous of it. There are, there are some other clauses, and if you look at the Narstedt version that had to be fixed, lots of extra legal work there when you pass something first and then have to go back and fix it because it doesn't work. So it creates a lot of problems for everybody, but please, go do your research. The problem with this has been that it eliminated almost all of the bidders. And by eliminating the other bidders, that you get, number one, super high bids because they can, and number two, you actually don't even, we probably will eliminate almost all of the local people. So you'll end up with a very few large companies that get all the work in all the townships around. And that really is problematic. So there are ways to amend it. Many of the other townships have done so, but I find it horrendous that Mr. Manfredi and Mr. Clark, who obviously know this, have brought this forth with the same onerous clauses that were in the other ones that were passed and had to be repealed or had to be amended at great expense. So why is that happening? We need to have people who are working in our interests. And even if they had presented it and said, well, here's some problems with it, here's some possible solutions, but they didn't. And that's problematic. So I would like to see that that actually is tabled and not move forward to any kind of action, brought back to a working session when you have a better grip on what do you think would work for this township because you looked at the others. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Toomey, you're unmuted.
Good evening. How is everybody doing? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Thank you. I, my name is Matt Toomey. I live in Glenside, Abington Township, 2102 Fortune Road. I completely disagree with what was just said. I am in full agreement of the township considering an RCO document. The reason for it, because I pulled the certified payrolls for the Abington High School project. And, and just to let you know, there was two problems with that. One, the site package, and the general contractor on that project not paying the proper wages on prevailing wage jobs. Right? So if you're doing your homework on that, if you're going to research different things and townships that do it, there's a protection that we didn't have because we didn't have RCO language in the school district. Right? So that's something you want to consider if you're going to research. Two, I'm in full agreement, or not in agreement, with the fact that you lose people to bid work. I can tell you, because I'm in the construction industry and represent people that are in the construction industry, the reason why they're not participating and bidding on projects is because there's people built in cheats, so they don't even bother bidding when they hear certain contractors are bidding work in townships. I can give you plenty of examples if you'd like them. The problem is, is that when you build a system that they can cheat in, you're not raising the bar for other people to be able to bid the properties correctly. There's a company called BSI. Company BSI did the electrical work, or bid the electrical work for the township, or excuse me, for the school district at Abington High School. They lost a bid. They were a local contractor. Right? So there, there are plenty of people here. I work for some, or I have friends that work for the companies that are, that are in the area. BSI, I have a friend that lives down the street from me. So there are plenty of people, union and non-union people, that live in this area that would benefit from an RCO, which is there's tax implications, paying proper taxes on, on social security, or excuse me, unemployment, paying workers' comp properly, getting the right insurance when you do a project. I've done, I testified before the State Senate Committee on, on misclassification of workers. There's a lot of that out there that, that goes against what was just being said. You have to watch for change orders and different things, things the different way. Get a prenuptial agreement when you work with any kind of contractor. Get unscrupulous contractors out of our township, hire local, and pay the prevailing wage. You don't let anyone cheat. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Toomey.
I'm in support of the ordinance.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Tovin, you're unmuted.
Yeah, my issue with the contractor agreement is more in, is, section 3C10 says 70% of the workforce need to have completed the apprenticeship. Okay, which would imply that 70% of the workers are going to be journeymen. Typical, like any trade typically has, there's a ratio that they have of journeymen to apprentices. And if Abington is requiring 70% of the workforce to be journeymen, our construction costs are going to be astronomical. That would, that would leave, out of four people, one's going to be apprentice, three journeymen. I think that 70% is not an accurate number, and I, alls I think that's going to do is drive up our cost. The other thing, I think it was Matt was just on, who from the township is going to monitor this to make sure, to make sure the, you know, the proper apprentices are, that they're going through the apprenticeship program? Who from the township is in place now that will monitor this? Or is this going to be somebody that needs to be hired and, and that's going to be their job? But you really need to check on the language that's written, and check with the unions to make sure what the ratio of, there's, on any union job, there's going to be foreman, journeymen, and then there's going to be apprentices. And there's a ratio that's used, that all the unions use. I think the 70% kind of wipes out most of the apprentices and it puts all journeymen in there. And that would be, I think that's going to drive our cost up on any project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I don't see anyone else. Is that right, Grace?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the agenda. Our first item of new business is to consider and discuss comprehensive wireless ordinance and wireless facility design standards. And I believe we have Mr. Cohen with us, Mr. Manfredi? Okay. Mr. Cohen, the floor is yours.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair, members of council. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I know you have a crowded agenda from two meetings, not just one, so I'll, I'll make this brief and answer any questions that you may have. There have been, and, by the way, our law firm is called the Cohen Law Group. We represent local governments and cable, wireless, and broadband issues. That's, that's all that we do as a law firm. And we've, we've had the privilege of working with Abington Township many times in the past. On the wireless side, there have been two major developments in the last few years. One, we're technological, and one regulatory. On the technology front, and we could certainly spend a lot of time talking about wireless technology, but I won't, because of the spike in demand for wireless broadband, the wireless industry has been rolling out facilities in the public rights of way. So that has kind of been a game changer for the management of wireless facilities by local governments. The term that the FCC uses for these facilities is small wireless facilities. They're not actually that small. They're up to 50 feet in height, and the antenna and equipment can have a total of 28 cubic feet, which is pretty large. So that's the first development, is that these so-called small wireless facilities that are being deployed in the public rights of way are boosting capacity to allow for broadband usage by smartphones, digital tablets, et cetera. The other, on the regulatory front, is that just last year, the Pennsylvania General Assembly passed Pennsylvania Act 50, which is the Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act. I won't go into the highlights of that act unless you would like me to. Let me just say that prior to these two developments, township's wireless provisions were fine, you know, more than satisfactory. Now, in light of those developments, they aren't, because the two provisions in the township code, one is in the zoning code and one is in chapter 154 of the township code, they don't address wireless facilities in the public rights of way. They don't have timeframes for approval, which are now necessary. The fee schedule in the current ordinance is out of compliance. There are no design standards, and that's actually been perhaps one of the most helpful tools since the passage of Act 50 for local governments, is to enact objective and clear design standards for small wireless facilities. There are no stealth technology requirements and various other things. But the biggest issue, members of the board, is that the current provisions, the current code, doesn't provide the township with the authority to manage these wireless facilities in the rights of way. So if you, if the municipality doesn't have provisions that address these so-called small wireless facilities, then Act 50 alone applies. Act 50 allows for local ordinances that would give you the management tools that you need, but if you don't have those tools, then Act 50 has very favorable rights for wireless providers, and they could do virtually anything they wish in the public rights of way. So bottom line is, the township is a, is a bit vulnerable right now, and we recommend that the township move forward with amending the wireless provisions that currently exist. And by the way, the ones for macro towers are generally fine. We're probably going to, you know, strengthen those a bit, but by and large, they're, they're fine. It'll mostly be to address these small wireless facilities in the public rights of way, and that, and to draft separate design standards that I had mentioned earlier. Those are two separate documents. And by doing so, and obviously going through the planning commission and this board for consideration, once it's completed, it would allow the township really to preserve the character of its community when it comes to wireless facilities. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. So in essence, I mean, what we're saying here is that our current, the portions of our current zoning code that pertain to this are both out of compliance with Act 50, and we have virtually no control over what's going in, in the public right of way. Is that, is that correct?
That's exactly right. Yes.
Thank you. I will open the floor to comments or questions from members of the board. Commissioner Bol.
So what would, so our next step would be to work with the Cohen group, to contract with them?
We would have to move this to a board meeting to approve, to move forward, for them to draft?
To develop an ordinance that would, to develop an ordinance and also to develop standards.
Yes.
Is that correct? Both? Yeah, I believe that's in the letter as well. Yeah, this seems like a, so obvious that I'm trying to figure out what, what's beneath the surface that we're, that we're not paying attention to, but, but thank you for the, thank you for the summary, Mr. Cohen. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bol. Commissioner Weinberg.
Thank you. What, I'm just curious, what can the township, in terms of, you know, how many of these things in the right of way? I mean, is it like one every block, one every mile of road? Well, I'm just, how widespread is, is this going to be, or could this be under Act 50?
Yeah, extremely widespread. So the wireless industry itself, if you don't mind, let me give you kind of a national figure, and then, you know, we can try to drill down to Abington Township as best as possible. So as of now, there are about 200,000 of these small wireless facilities nationwide. The, the wireless, it's called the WIA, the Wireless Industry Association itself, estimates that by 2026, there'll be over a million of them. So, you know, how many of those will come into Abington Township? We don't know, because the wireless industry won't, they won't tell you exactly what their plans are, but it certainly will be many, because as the demand for wireless broadband increases, the need for these small wireless facilities becomes greater and greater. And the, the coverage area, which I think was also part of your question, the coverage area is very small. It's about 1,000 feet. That's it. So these, depending on exactly where they're needed, these will be, these will multiply in the rights of way.
I mean, I assume it's going to be where demand, where demand is, right?
For sure. Yes. And, and by the way, I'm just, just to separate in your mind, the, the macro sites from these smaller sites. The macro site, of course, is probably, and most of them were built decades ago, and that was for coverage, right? It was for telephone coverage. Now, these, you know, micro sites, although they're, again, they can be 50 feet tall, they're to boost capacity, and you really need to have a combination of both of them to be able to have good wireless broadband, which obviously the township would want as well, so that you don't have any, any gaps in coverage.
But given that, that we have residents all over the township, we can't, whatever we come up in, in terms of zoning, would have to be throughout the entire township. We couldn't have an exclusive, exclusive area, or exclusion area, or anything like that.
That's correct. You can't prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting these things in, in any area, and Act 50 says that they have to be permitted throughout. Now, having said that, you can manage them. You can manage what their locations are, you can imagine what they, you can, you can manage, rather, what they look like, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it, Cohen.
Thank you, Commissioner Weinberg. Commissioner Rothman.
Thanks for your time. I had a quick question. I'm not sure if there's a real direct answer to it, or if it's even how it relates, but my question relates to radiation. And, you know, I, I'm no expert on the subject, but I have read about that, you know, from an environmental standpoint, from a, being close to it as, as a person, whether or not it's wildlife, or, or trees, or a human, that there are concerns with radiation, with everything wireless. Is this something that addresses that in any way? Would we have to worry about that? Does the Act take care of that for us? Is there, I mean, I guess it's sort of a, a very general question, but if you could briefly run with that dynamic, I'd appreciate gaining some knowledge.
Sure, sure. There's a, there's a simple, direct answer to your question on what the regulatory authority of the township is, and that is that the, and it's not even actually an FCC order, it's actually the Telecom Act of 1996 says that local governments may not prescribe radio frequency emissions standards, or anything else related to the health effects of wireless facilities. So you're absolutely preempted from doing that. Whether that's the right thing or not, of course, is another issue, and, and it's a big issue. Look at, I've, I've sat through many public hearings where some smart people have gotten up and cited studies that show that there are health effects of radio frequency emissions, and, and the opposite, that there aren't. The, the FCC frankly isn't helping matters, because the last time they did a study of this was 1996. I think we'd all agree that wireless technology has changed pretty dramatically since 1996, but the township does not have the legal authority to do that, and this ordinance will not. It, it, it will appear in, in one place in the ordinance, and that is, you do have the right to require wireless providers to certify and demonstrate that their radio frequency emissions are within FCC standards. So that you can do, but in terms of either denying an application because, you know, you're, you're worried about the health effects, or, you know, enacting your own standards, the township doesn't have the legal authority to do that.
I'll take my crusade elsewhere. I appreciate your, your clarification in that regard.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Are there any further comments or questions for members of the board? So a reminder at this meeting, we are actually not taking a vote on taking a next direction, but there does seem to be sentiment that it would be appropriate for this to move forward for formal consideration. Is there anybody that feels differently? Then we will move on to item two. This is for us to consider an ordinance establishing procedures for certification of responsible contractor requirements, and I'm going to first start with Commissioner Schreiber.
Thank you very much. So this responsible contractor ordinance, or RCO, that we're considering tonight covers public projects, construction projects, which are over $250,000, and goes a step beyond just looking at the lowest possible bid. There would be some other requirements put into place to assure the taxpayers that qualified contractors will be bidding on public works, works projects. Anyone can bid, provided they meet the RCO requirements. So for example, the RCO recognizes the importance of employee training and safety, and would preclude companies that have been convicted of a felony related to their labor practices. Many municipalities have already passed similar ordinances to help protect taxpayer dollars, and I'm glad we're finally considering this in Abington. If anybody has any particular legal questions about this ordinance, I'm happy to turn this over to our solicitor, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Solicitor Clark, would you like to make a few comments? I'm sure that members of the board will have questions for you as well.
Sure, certainly. The proposed ordinance provides and codifies procedures related to the solicitation and award of public works contracts. This ordinance does not have any impact on private companies or residents. It serves the legitimate government interest in ensuring that a well-trained workforce provides quality workmanship on public projects. Many, if not most, of the requirements in the ordinance are existing established law related to the awarding of municipal contracts. The ordinance adds a requirement and a certification that 70% of the craft workers who will perform work on the project have completed an apprenticeship program. This requirement will apply to all contractors and subcontractors. The proposed threshold for this ordinance is $250,000. Contracts under $250,000 are exempt from the ordinance. The ordinance contains a pre-qualification requirement. Those contractors who wish to bid a job will need to pre-qualify in order to submit a bid. This prevents contractors who will not qualify from spending time and money submitting a bid, and enables the township to evaluate bids, award contracts, and begin projects more quickly. In 2018, the ordinance was challenged in federal court. It was upheld in federal court, and then in the Eastern District of Pennsylvania, and then subsequently upheld in the Third Circuit Court of Appeals. And for those who may not be paying attention to those things, the Circuit Court of Appeals are the level right below the United States Supreme Court. The ordinance does have a change from the ordinance that has been in effect in the last, for the last 10 or 15 years or so, and that is adding a requirement that the 70% of the craft workers on the job have completed an apprenticeship program. This helps eliminate a loophole where you would have a company that may be certified because they participate in the program, but then the 20, 30 people they send out to your job, none of them have gone through an apprenticeship program. So this is trying to prevent that loophole. Happy to answer any questions.
Yes. Start with, let me start with Commissioner Brodsky, then Bol, and then Commissioners Zepone.
Did it not search for that? It wasn't up to the United States Supreme Court? No, never.
Okay. Commissioner Bol.
Two quick questions. One, one was about the how, I think you may have answered it, Solicitor Clark, but it was around the 70% number, sort of how that was arrived at. Am I hearing you correctly that, that it's an overwhelming majority is what they wanted to put?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, that's how they arrived at the number? Okay.
And, and the idea, actually during the lawsuit back in 2018 and 2019, the company that was challenging, or the, the people who were challenging the ordinance, one of the challenges, they said, was there's no guarantee that there's going to be apprentice, people who've completed an apprenticeship program actually working on the job. So when the ordinance was looked at again, it was decided to arrive at that number. I think the 70% number comes from the idea that the majority of people will be, have completed a program and will be, have the ability to monitor and, and oversee the other, the other 30%.
Okay. And then my second question was about language with a specific nod to Sister Michael Torres, my grade school English teacher who made me diagram sentences all the time. In section 2A, I, I read this and sort of understood that it would apply to projects valued at $250,000, but I'm not sure that that's what it says. It's, I grammatically read this as it applies to modernization service for maintenance of buildings, structures, or facilities valued at over $250,000. I think we need a couple commas in there, or to move the phrase at or above $250,000 up to right after projects? I just, I don't know if we're wordsmithing the document here or not, but I, I just, I read that initially and sort of scratched my head and thought, I don't know that that's clear.
Certainly, we can take a look at that, and if we need to throw in an extra comma there for clarity, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments?
And I, I could just mention, the, the list of all of the types of work that would be required are the ones that are required to be, to be bid, and there are certain things that are not required to be bid. That's why that's not, they're not listed in here, so.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bol. Commissioner Zepone.
Okay, a couple things with this. I've been doing some research on this. First of all, have we had any issues with this in the past? Because I, I've been on the board 22 years, and I don't remember any issues of this kind coming up. Am I unmuted?
No, no, no. I wasn't sure who, to whom you were exactly addressing the question.
But that, that's the answer, then, that we've had no issues. Also, so, from what I understand by reading this, and I did research this afternoon, so it sounds like we're going strictly with the union shop. it sounds like we're going strictly with a union shop. Is that accurate information?
No. Nowhere in the ordinance is there any requirement that the bidders be a union shop. It can be an open shop. Everyone is allowed to bid, as long as they can meet all of the requirements in the ordinance. I believe one of the earlier speakers spoke about an electrical contractor called BSI. BSI is an open shop, but is often awarded many of these bids under the Responsible Contractor Ordinance, so you do not have to be a union shop, you can be an open shop.
Okay, because most of the union shops have the apprentice program, okay? The non-union shops, I deal with, do not have that. So, it just sounds like the spin is going towards, you know, a union shop, and then I hear about well-trained, so, in other words, a non-union company, where their employees are not well-trained, and I deal with a ton of these subcontractors and GCs on a daily basis. And some of the non-union contractors, I got to tell you, their employees, whether they're electricians, or plumbers, or carpenters, they're highly trained in their field. Safety meetings, you name it, okay? And these are, I'm talking about, I'm dealing with million-dollar projects, okay? And I think you would get more bidders without the RCO. So, if you're going basically with this, you're going to have fewer bidders, okay? You're going to go to the high-level bidders, which is going to raise our taxes, okay? And I'm not for that at all. So, again, I've been doing a lot of research on this, and there's just different things in here that I'm not in favor of at all. So, and I also understand that in Allentown and Bethlehem, this failed up there. So, I think we'd better do a little more research in this, you know? People that are in the business, been in the business a long time, should be sitting around the table, okay, and giving their input and advice. Did we ever think about getting a committee together with different contractors and all, and sit around and discuss this, which is the right thing to do? Instead of just going by legal this, legal that, legal this, legal that? Let's get people that are involved in the business, okay, that do it on a daily basis, that have been doing it for 40, 50 years. Let's put them around the table and discuss this ordinance with them. Get the do's and don'ts, get their input, their advice. That's the way we should be proceeding with this, okay? So, that's just my spin on this for now, and I will continue to do my research on this. So that's all I have to say at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Sapon. Manager Manfredi, not to put you on the spot, but offhand, how many projects a year would fall into this category in an average year?
Public projects?
Yeah.
Well, since we do so many of the projects with our construction services and other teams ourselves, and any work that we do ourself, that we undertake, Solicitor Clark has confirmed that that would not be subject to this ordinance. I don't know that we've had, in the last few years, projects of this nature. The one that comes to mind is we're going to be bidding out the HVAC for this roof. Estimate that to be a $3.1 million project. That would fall under this. But again, we've been doing so many projects ourselves, that it would not matter. Now, having said that, we did just go through some bidding for milling and others, where we're splitting, we're doing some of it, and we're doing others, and I think Mike Jones was on the line. Mike, are you still there? While we search for him, I mean, we do a lot of projects with paving and milling that exceed that $250,000, that are publicly bid, that they do the work, that those contractors, I would think, would have to comply with this. For example, the current milling and paving bid I know is $300,000.
That's helpful. Were we able to connect with Mr. Jones, or should I move to the next Commissioner question?
Always come back to him.
Okay.
Yeah, let's mute him.
All right. Commissioner Rothman? Thank you. Floor is yours, Commissioner Rothman.
Yeah. So, I mean, I guess, if we knew, to Commissioner Sapon's point, if we knew that there was a major problem, or had stats on it, I'm sure we'd share it, but I think what we're exploring here is a dynamic of being proactive, rather than reactive, and I'm 1,000% in favor of proactive. I mean, there's a million things that we know, the police department has statistics out the wazoo, I'm sure, of things that are going on out there, but they're not reported, and that doesn't mean that there shouldn't be programs there put in place to help prevent such things, or to train people on such things. I've also done some research on this, and I don't believe that there's no, you know, that it's flawless, but I do think that it's incredibly responsible for us as a board to continue discussing this and pursuing it, and I think that we frankly owe it to our community to do so, because to look the other way, I believe, is grossly negligent. So, I mean, I don't seek to condemn what Commissioner Sapon's saying, and the open forum that we're having in these working sessions is exactly what that's for, but I would say that I think we need to move forward with pursuit of this, along with asking more and more questions as we do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, President Hecker. Solicitor Clark, just as an example, something like the Crestmont Clubhouse, which, you know, is a township facility, but I think was built with federal funds, would that fall under this ordinance?
If there are any township funds that are involved, then yes, it would fall under this ordinance. Many federal grant programs require you to follow any of your, well, you obviously have to follow the bidding statutes, and you have to certify that you've done it all properly, and they also require you to follow your own ordinances, but it would depend on the particular grant, but if we're using township money, it would apply.
Okay. So even stuff that's funded with grant would still be affected by this? Okay. And then, just a general comment that I wanted to make on this, and then I'll give back the microphone. But we are, we're in a world now where we are struggling to get bidders to the table. There's a lot of work out there. There's a shortage of manpower, there's supply chain issues. Bringing contractors to the table for work now is very difficult, but that is not permanent, and we've seen the opposite of that back in 2008, when work does dry up, and money is given to municipalities, to governments, to stimulate the economy. And, you know, in 2008, 2009, we saw a lot of unqualified contractors bidding on anything and everything that was publicly listed. And because of the way that we have to bid work in this state, we have to take the lowest responsive bid, which isn't always a qualified bid, but it is the lowest responsive bid. So this will actually give us some protection in the future, when the economy does shift, and when work becomes scarce, and when we do see interest by every single firm, whether qualified or not, out there. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. It's an excellent point. Commissioner Schreiber?
Yeah, this is in agreement with what Commissioner Thompson just said, but I also have a question with that. That with all the ARPA money that's coming forward, is that part of this? I mean, would that be covered by this, or would that be separate?
If we're spending money that's coming out of our
Our pot of it.
General fund, our coffers, yes.
So projects may increase all over at that point, I would imagine, and there'll be more people bidding on all of these, which further, I think, you know, means that we should be looking for the best, the strongest, the safest ways to do things, and it is the responsible thing to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner Rothman, of course.
I don't think that any of us are really saying that just because someone is not a union contractor means that they're not good at their work, but what we're saying is that if we have the ability to provide an extra layer of protection, that's what we were seeking to discuss and want to apply to what's being done as to work in the township. It doesn't mean they weren't, you can always have someone, a process can work where someone fits the bill, and isn't as good as someone else, or vice versa, but all we're discussing, I think, at least from my perspective, all I seek to pursue here is a safer way, and potentially a more reliable way for certain construction work to be done, and I think we do all hope that there is that kind of boom, because that's a good sign of economic recovery, and, I mean, there's a lot of folks that are going to be looking to make up for the hardships that they experienced the last two years, and saying, yeah, I can do that, but maybe, maybe they can do it, but maybe they're not properly trained, or other dynamics. I know we're fixating on the training dynamic. So, again, I just, I think it's responsible for us to consider this.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Any further comments or questions for members of the board? So I think we'll have to delineate what the appropriate next steps would be. Are there others that wish to make recommendations in that regard?
I would like to recommend that we move this on till next month, I can't speak, voting meeting for passage.
Do we have to vote to advertise this, and then vote on it itself?
You would do that at the May meeting.
Right, so the May meeting would be a consideration of a motion to advertise this for the June meeting?
Authorize the ordinance to be, and the solicitor would prepare it, advertise it, and vote on it the following month.
Okay.
After I add Commissioner Bowles' comma.
Comma, yeah, or two, yeah. And that could provide the timing opportunity that Commissioner Sapon raised about, you know, vetting this and talking with folks in the community about it. So, I mean, we're looking at a two-month process, if we wanted to, to get to a yes or no, right?
Yeah, there is a lot of information out there.
Yep.
Yes, short answer is yes. And I also want to answer your other question more fully, when we were trying to go back and forth with Mr. Jones, we currently have, we do a lot of grants, obviously, you mentioned, I think we have 2.2 million this year in the budget, we have hourly grants, we have our paving materials, we have our milling that we're doing. So there are a lot of projects that are currently budgeted, that we budget annually, that we do the work on, that some will qualify and most likely go over that $250,000.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you, Manager Manfredi. Commissioner Weingrad with the late hand.
Thank you. I just would like to know, as we, and I'm in agreement to move forward and discuss, but I do want to know, will this raise the cost of doing public works in a township? And I think that we owe it to the residents to know, and it may be okay, maybe it's acceptable that it's going to be more costly, but I think we should know that, and I think it's something that we should tell our residents, that their taxpayer dollars are going to go to these projects, but they're going to cost a little more, and for budgetary reasons. We may need to, in the future, to have to allocate more money toward these types of projects. Again, I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just saying, these are questions I think that should be asked, and we should be prepared to answer to the taxpayers.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. Solicitor Clark, in your experience, I mean, can you speak to that point?
So, I can speak to the fact that there are a couple of studies that are constantly floated around out there, but none of them are really considered objective. So there's nothing that really indicates that it either raises costs, as one side of the argument wants to make, or it lowers costs, as another side of the argument would make. I think every time you see that, it's somewhat biased. I think the most important issue is, Pennsylvania is a prevailing wage state, so whether or not we're, whether or not someone is apprentice, whether or not someone's a union, someone's an open shop, they have to pay prevailing wage on a job. Pipes are pipes, and asphalt is asphalt, so the cost of materials shouldn't really change with this, and very often, when bids come in, it's depending on how much a particular bidder is trying to mark up the job, to see how much profit they can make. So there really is nothing out there that says it increased costs.
Okay. Thank you.
I have an electronic.
Certainly, Commissioner Sapon.
Okay, what, my concern is these escalating costs, which is going to hit the pocketbooks of our taxpayers, okay? I know it, I've seen it, okay? So, again, when you're dealing with union, non-union, there's a big, major difference, okay? I deal with it every day for 45 years, so I know what I'm talking about, okay? My concern is our taxpayers, okay? That is my concern, and I know where this is going to go, and I know exactly what's going to happen. So, I just wanted to make that comment, you know, I'm trying to protect our taxpayers' pocketbook. Thank you.
No, thank you, Commissioner Sapon. I mean, I think we all share that concern. I'd like to see more data in that regard. I mean, to the solicitor's point, I mean, if we're already paying prevailing wage, I mean, that cost is baked in, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that would change. Clearly, in this era of supply chain shortages, the cost of goods and services has skyrocketed. That's out of our control, but I'm happy to continue that dialogue. I think what we're trying to do is ensure that we get the best possible work done, and there's a belief that adhering to these kinds of standards goes a long way to ensuring it. It's not perfect, nothing ever is, but I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made here tonight. So we will work forward, on a path forward on that, and with that, the working session is adjourned. Thank you.